All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Wyoming City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 And would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel accessible from the city's website. If you would like to address City Council, please come up to the microphone to speak. The audio will not pick up if you do not speak into a microphone for those watching from YouTube. There are three items on the consent agenda. They are: approval of the June 17, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes; a resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Wyoming, Ohio to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capitol Improvement; and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required; and a resolution authorizing the then-enown certificate. Do I hear a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, having been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, the motion carries. Are there any questions or comments on the special reports? Okay, then we will now hear a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, Shakespeare in the Park will be performing at Village Green at 7:00 PM, and they will be performing Hamlet, and this is a free event. And this is, I think, a big event for our new Village Green, so if you get the opportunity to go. The event is being sponsored by the Wyoming Community Foundation, so again, I think it'll be a really cool new-style event for the Wyoming Village Green. Next Friday, the next Friday night concert is Friday, July 19, again at the Village Green. It will feature Danny Nichols. Stop by your favorite local restaurants for some delicious food and enjoy a Dora beverage and relax while listening to music. Don't forget to bring your lawn chairs and/or blankets, and be sure to invite your friends and neighbors. The Summer Vendor Market Series will be at Village Green on Saturday, July 20, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. If you miss this one, the next one will be Saturday, August 10. There will be a variety of vendors, including food, arts and crafts, body care, clothing, and more. Our free family entertainment series continues with Circus Mojo performing on the Village Green on Thursday, July 25, at 7:00 p.m. at the Village Green. And the next live on the Green Concert Series will be Wednesday, July 31, from 7:00 to 9:00 with a band, No Guarantees. I know that's a lot happening at Village Green. Again, you can check our website to keep track of that calendar. A lot of cool things happening. We are accepting applications for part-time water meter reader position. Information can be found on the website, and we're seeking volunteers to serve on Environmental Stewardship Commission, Economic Development Commission, and Recreation Commission. If you're interested, go to the website. And the last thing I wanted to point out, something just a lot of people probably didn't even realize, but just shows how hard some of our people work. So, one of our waterworks employees, at 1:00 a.m. this morning, heard the phone ring and checked it out, and the person on Oak Avenue said they had no water pressure at 1:00 in the morning. So our Public Works staff was able to come in, they called the people that needed to mark their proper lines, and they repaired an entire water main break while most people slept and got the water back on for most of the people in the street before they really ever noticed it. So again, overnight, it was a seven-hour job, and they got that done, so round of applause for Public Works. And that's all I have, Mayor.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any council committee reports not otherwise on the agenda? And are there any special committee reports not otherwise on the agenda? Okay. Then we've reached that point in our meeting where a citizen may express an opinion, make a statement, address a concern, or ask a question on any subject that is not otherwise on the agenda. Comments will be recorded into the minutes and passed along to be addressed by the appropriate staff member or City Council Committee as needed. This portion of the meeting is not for City Council to provide responses to a citizen comment, but to hear what the citizen has to say. And if you wish a response from the city to your concern or request for information, please be sure to leave your contact information with the clerk before you leave the meeting. And as a reminder, please state your name and address before making your comments to Council. Is there anyone present that would like to bring an item not otherwise on the agenda before City Council? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item of business. So that is a presentation from Energy Alliances on the city's gas aggregation program, and I welcome Daniel Dieters.
Hey, Joel. My name's Dan Dieters from Energy Alliances. Some of you may know Kathy Dieters, my sister-in-law, who was here on the electric program a little while ago. What we're asking you to consider this evening is to extend essentially the gas aggregation program from this October 24 to October 25. There's two things going on right now that I wanted to advise the Council of. The first is, there is an adjustment that is happening with the regular Duke rate from 12 to 17 cents that will probably run, it'll certainly run through the winter, which is when most of the gas usage is. So that adjustment will occur, which basically means that Duke, as a utility, estimates their usage for any period of time, and if they do not estimate it properly, they go back and they get an adjustment, and they can get their money and they recover their costs. If they, if they, if they overbuy, they come back and give the money back in that certain period of time. Unfortunately, there is a pretty large adjustment coming over the next, it's actually probably started, I think, July it started. So, we are asking that the city consider a new price from October of '24 to October of '25. We will ask you, we're gonna put a price together, and 40 some other communities are doing the exact same thing over the next couple of weeks to put together this price to make sure that, A, we avoid the adjustment, and B, that we have a nice, stable, much, much lower price through the summer, or, I'm sorry, through the winter. So, the other thing is, in your, I don't know if you're wondering, the only reason we're only doing a one-year deal is because Duke is changing the way that they purchase gas next year in October. Right now, they do an estimate, they buy the estimate, and then they make up after. I think they're, you know, I think they don't want to put that money out any longer. So they're doing a market-based purchase that they will say, okay, on the 15th of the month, we're gonna buy the gas we need for that month. So, they're gonna be a full variable market price starting in October of '25, where they were a variable market price now, but it was based on their estimates and what they had to buy. So, it's gonna change a little bit. So, when we come back to you this time next year or before, we're gonna have different pricing structures, different solutions, and there very possibly could be a guaranteed percent off of the Duke gas price at that time. If we do a very similar type program, what they, what they'll do is they'll buy the gas, they'll do their adder, which is delivery and a bunch of other things. If we can find an adder that's much cheaper, we'll bring that to you and offer you that option also. So, why we're asking to give Mr. Herzog the ability to move this is because this stuff moves every day. If we get a good price, and I'm not saying we're gonna do it either, if we can't get a price that we feel is good for the winter, we may just say, okay, we'll go back to Duke with everybody. But we think we're gonna have a price in the low 50 cents mid, you know, this month it's 71 cents, next month it's 68 cents. So if we can get something that's reasonable through winter, we'd like to be able to execute on that.
Okay.
If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Council?
Can you maybe give me a little more detail about what the process is gonna look like after this, after right now? Like, not necessarily from you specifically, but if you're gonna come back to us with numbers that are going to you, are you gonna reach out to us and have a conversation, or are we trying to enable you to just make a choice?
So what you're gonna do is give, you're gonna vote on legislation that will give me the ability to enter into a contract as long as the price is below.
Duke's GCR, which stands for Gas Cost Recovery.
So, if they bring a price to me that they think is a good price and it's below Duke's, then I can enter the contract, enter into the contract. It will only be for one year, whereas the one that we're on currently is two years. So yes, that's what you would be voting on today.
And you use, you use about 80% of your gas in a four-month period.
Right.
So, we're trying to protect November 15 through March, you know, 15.
They're trying to get, they're also putting together prices with all these other communities, and when they feel that the price is appropriate, then they'll lock in that price, basically.
But we need the ability for each community to move rapidly.
Sure.
Do we have stats on how many residents have opted out, or is that just for electric? Or can you do both?
Do we have that?
We do. They're, they're on those reports that we send over.
So those, so just, we have the reports we receive quarterly, I believe we receive them. So Debbie posts those, posts those on the website, so you can go on there and see how our performance is. Energy definitely has performed well, gas not as well. If you were on both, though, you came out as a general, in general, ahead, but...
But those, and those aren't really apples-to-apples figures, because now they're doing their adjustment, so you'd have to take that adjustment and then re-figure the Duke price. And if you did that, just generally, the program probably saved money. But it saved a lot of money last year to, the first winter we had it in, because prices were in the dollar range, dollar, 90, it's 95 cents is what it was for that winter. It was 58 cents last winter, but if you add that adjustment in there, all of a sudden you're at 71, 72 cents. So, we, we, it was not, so we won, we won 12 cents at CCF two years ago. We lost nine last year. But the big thing, there's a couple things, we talk about gas. It's really important to stabilize people's energy bills, because Duke does not. You could be at, you could be at 25 cents one month, and then you could be at a dollar 36 the next month, and nobody, you know, it's very difficult for people to budget that way.
So, I guess my request in this is, we're gonna vote on this thing, right? Something's gonna change, and the community's gonna know nothing about it. There's gonna wind up being some posts on Facebook without a lot of information. And so, I guess my request is, is there any way, we have something that we can post ahead of that to just let people know what happens if a decision is made to make a change, so that it's not a after-the-fact, like...
Are you thinking like a Facebook post that says, hey, we're happy to...
City can post it, and then we can repost it.
That we're happy to announce that we've entered into this agreement with Energy Alliance for the next 12 months?
Well, and here's why we did it.
Exactly.
I mean, I don't know that people actually care what the answer is. They want to know why there's some new choice that's been put in front of people in a short period of time, right, to where there, so I'm just thinking about community trust in the process more than anything.
I'm happy to provide that, all of that information, and when this goes, so that we're looking at, by August 10, if something doesn't happen by August 10, it will not start in October. So we can provide this information long before anybody would get the first letter.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah, just, again, it's more...
No, I get you.
Thinking about how we roll it out.
Just, just so everybody knows, this information is all on the website. It explains the program, has frequently asked questions to it, has the price as it's shown on there. One of the challenges that I see and the staff sees regularly is that people just don't understand really what they're reading, even when they get the letters. So we always encourage residents to give us a call. It's a lot easier to explain over the phone. If I can't explain them, I ask them to give Energy Alliance a call as well, but we will try to continue to be proactive and get information out there, put the information out. So this is, the, the contract's gonna expire in October, so if we do nothing, all the residents are gonna go back to Duke regardless. So we're gonna need to explain that, too. So whatever we do, we're gonna need to explain, and I agree with you, we'll try to do it in the best way we can do.
And there was some other company that came out and went door-to-door, and they had the right to do it, but it freaked a lot of people out.
Yep.
So, you're...
It should freak a lot of people out.
Well, and he's talking, he had all kinds of numbers on what you guys were doing and what they were doing, and people don't own that knowledge. So, again, that's my requirement, I mean, just...
Yep. I hear you.
Anyway, so if you can throw some things together, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely, we'll do that. And one final thing is, and Mr. Herzog knows, we do all our customer service ourself. We don't refer it to the utility, to the utility or to the supplier. So when someone calls our office, they'll talk to Kathy or myself, and they're gonna talk to the same people who are out here talking to you. And that's important to us, because we want to make sure people get the right information. And people can get out and in the program through just contacting us and not have to sit through the long call queues and the robo answering machine type thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next order of business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a natural gas aggregation agreement with a supplier recommended by Energy Alliance Incorporated. Do I hear a motion with respect to the resolution?
I motion to adopt the resolution as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? Having been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, the motion carries. So the next up is a public hearing on the ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $6,500,000 road improvement bond anticipation notes by the city of Wyoming, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city. And I understand that I turn it over to Heather Arling from Bradley Paint to give a brief overview. So welcome, thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me, and good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Arling, and I work for Bradley Payne Advisors. I'm the municipal advisor to the city, which means that I have a fiduciary responsibility to the city. So this started months ago. We sat down and had a discussion with the city on the projects that they had planned or needs that needed to be met, broke down each, each section of the project, and decided on issuing short-term notes for the water and the roads. So we have 6.5 million in roads, and then 3.5 million in water work system improvements. We decided on short-term notes, because the needs are larger than this. We can do a one-year note this year, and then when the next portion of the road projects or any other projects, we would include, depending on timeline, in the next note. That could be next year, that could be two, three years from now. It depends on the needs. But keeping it short-term allows for any large paydowns that might be needed. And then, once all the project debt is issued, we will roll them into notes. So then the rates will be locked in for 30 years, or if they decide to go 20, 15, or 10 years. We are also looking at entering into the Ohio Municipal Access Program, which is run through the Treasurer of State. The Treasurer of State has, they just upped the amount, it was 400 million. They received a large influx, but we'll go with 400 million. They have 400 million sitting in an account, and what they do at the Treasurer of State's office through the OMAT program is we submit an application, and a, they go through their credit process, and then turn it over to S&amp;P or Standard and Poor's, and they rate that based on the program that the Treasurer of State has come up with. So it's, the cost is significantly less than going directly to S&amp;P, and it lowers the rate anywhere from .10 or 10 basis points, which most recently I've seen .30 or 30 basis points lower in rate by doing this program. And so what we do is, we'll submit the application, do the analysis, and make sure that the lower rate will pay for the small costs associated with it, and usually we end up proceeding with it. Investors really prefer it, that or rating, but this is even better, because in the investor's mind, they think, oh, the city somehow decides they're not going to pay their, their debt or their debt payment. The treasurer comes in, makes it, makes the payment, and the investors feel warm and cozy inside. They feel great about it. So that is something we're looking at and exploring as well. The timeline, we plan to take the notes to the market and offer them to investors on September 25, and then two weeks later, on October 9, is when we will close and all of the funds will be transferred.
Any questions? That. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone present who'd like to comment or provide input on this item? You're welcome right now to come up as part of a public hearing. Okay. Okay, therefore, the hearing's closed. So the next business item is the second reading of the ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $6,500,000 road improvement bond anticipation notes by the city of Wyoming, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city. The third reading of this ordinance is set for August 19, City Council Meeting. So next up is a public hearing on the ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $3,500,000 for water system improvement bond anticipation notes by the city of Wyoming, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds of this city. Is there anyone present who would like to comment or provide input on this item? Please state your name and address for the record before addressing Council. Okay, seeing none, this hearing is closed, and we'll move to the next item of business. So this is the second reading of the ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $3,500,000 water system improvement bond anticipation notes by the city of Wyoming, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city. The third reading of this ordinance is set for the August 19, City Council Meeting. So next up is a report from the Finance Committee on the assumptions for the 2025 through 2027 financial projections and on the 2025 tax budget. And I'm turning it over to Mr. Drehouse as the Finance Committee Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor. We had a robust discussion in finance. Ms. Waffington and I were present, along with Mr. Herzog and Jeremiah, and like the, just the numbers so far this year, are we talking about the numbers so far through this year at this point? Okay. Are looking very positive. Our two primary sources of revenue are municipal income tax and real estate taxes. Our municipal income taxes are over 11%, higher year-to-date than they were last year at this time. Our real estate taxes are over 25% higher than they were last year at this time. So that's a pretty significant uptick in revenue for our city, and Jeremiah has the report to report out about the various revenue streams and expenses. Thank you.
Good evening. So Finance Committee met June 6, 2024, to review the tax budget and the assumptions for the tax budget. As Councilman Drehouse stated, in the current budgets process, the estimates for property tax and income tax are up in the current year. In the tax budget, the estimate for the year-end is 7 million, so we have 7 million for income tax. The property tax receipts are budgeted at 4.497 million, which is 90%, 97% of the duplicate that the county allows you to budget, 97% of what you believe you'll take in in property tax receipts. The operating budget side in the general fund, those remain flat in the 2025 tax budget. The only exceptions are contractual increases for personnel, so the union increases. And some of the other items are yet to still be determined through the budget process, so the tax budget doesn't include capital projects or equipment transfers, as those things are determined when we go through the 2025 budget process. That's all I have for the tax budget. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, it's recommended that the report be received. Do I hear a motion with respect to the report?
I move to accept the report as submitted.
Second. Is there any further discussion? No? Okay, having been moved and seconded to receive the report, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, the motion carries. So next is a public hearing on the 2025 tax budget. If there's anyone present who would like to comment or provide input on this item, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record before addressing City Council. Okay. Hearing none, this hearing is closed, and we'll move on to the next item of business. Next up is a resolution adopting the tax budget of the city of Wyoming, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and submitting the same to the county auditor. Do I hear a motion with respect to the resolution?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Okay, next up is, this is the first reading of the ordinance appropriating revenues within certain funds, transferring revenues from certain funds, and transferring certain funds within designated accounts. Are there any questions on these transfers? Okay, then it's recommended that the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for adoption tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So I moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? Having been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Waffington?
Yes.
Ms. Dupreehouse?
Yes.
For your motion?
Yes. The motion carries. So we will now need a motion to consider adoption of the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, so having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Waffington?
Yes.
Ms. Dupreehouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries. So next up is the second quarter financial summary, and I'll turn it back over to our Finance Director.
And that's what I spoke to earlier, so sorry about that.
You're good.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Tonight, I will provide you the second quarter financial summary for 2024. Let me get this computer to work. First few slides will provide an overview of the general fund. Go through the other city, the other major funds for the city. General Fund, through the first half of the year of 2024, received 9,558,000 in revenue, and we received 3.7 million in real estate taxes and 5.2 million in income taxes. And you can see some of the other categories. Local Government Fund, charges for services, most of charges for services are the EMS paramedic billing for the city. And permits, most of the permits are building permits. You have core costs. In the general fund, the city earned 151,000 in interest in the first half of the year. You can see here, the majority of the city's revenue is property and income tax. It makes up 94% of the revenue that was received in the first half of 2024. And I'll go through some highlights and revenue here in a second. In terms of general fund expenditures, 5,298,000 in expenditures in the first half of the year. And in expenditures, three departments make up 63% of the expenditures in the first half of the year. It's police, the Police Department, other operating costs, and Public Works. And just to go through some highlights, as was stated earlier, our income tax receipts are up 11.6% compared to 2023. So income tax receipts are on target for the year to, I believe, to be about 7.4 million. Last year, we were at about 7.32, I think it was 7.39 million. So just very close to where we were last year in income tax receipts. In terms of property tax receipts, we're up almost 25%. And it's on target for the estimate that was, we provided of 4.6 million for 2024. It compares to 3.5 million received in 2023. We have transfers out of 778,000. And the majority of the transfers were to our health life insurance fund to pay our health insurance costs. And then the expenses, you can see we've expended 41% of the budget with 50% of the year complete. So we're trending under our budget amount for the year. The next two slides highlight the Recreation Fund. You can see we received 780,000 in revenue in the first half of the year. That's up 9.58% or 68,000 compared to 2023. And in terms of recreation expenditures, the expenditures are on target for budget. There's no anomalies in the rec fund expenditures. In terms of the capital improvement, the Water Works Capital Improvement Fund, you can see expenditures of 505,000 in the CIP Fund. And a breakdown of what those expenditures are for the Oliver Road, Road Improvements, Village Green Improvements, Hike Bike Trail, Mount Pleasant and Riley Road Design, and then the first half debt service that was paid. And the Water Works Capital Improvement Fund, again, Oliver Road, service line replacements, the Hilltop Park Water Main Project, and also debt service in the Water Fund. And the Water Works Revenue Fund, you can see, we received 916,000 in revenue. And the majority of that is made up of our water sales. Expenditures of 961,000 in the first half of the year. It's higher compared to the prior period due to several projects. So some of the dollars were transferred over to do the Oliver Road service lines, the Mount Pleasant Riley Road designs, and the Hilltop Park Water Main projects. That's why the expenditures are up in the first half due to those transfers. And just to highlight, the last slide highlights two of the city's non-major funds, Street Construction Fund, State Highway Fund. Two of the higher expenditures in the Street Construction Fund are the pedestrian safety bump out that was completed on Wyoming Avenue and streetlights. So gas and electric paid for streetlights. So the bump out was 60,000, streetlights were 43,500. The city did receive approximately 30,000 in grants towards the bump out that was completed on Wyoming Avenue. And then State Highway Fund, you can see there's, received 25,000 in revenue and 15,800 in expenditures. And that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, then it's recommended that the report be received. So do I hear a motion with respect to the report?
I move to receive the report.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to receive the report, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes. Yes.
Those opposed, the motion carries. So this is, next is, this is the third reading of the ordinance amending Section 1135.99 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Wyoming pertaining to the penalty for violations of the Planning and Zoning Code. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? So having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Waffington?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Your mark.
Yes, the motion carries. So next up, this is the third reading of the ordinance approving a development plan change for the public safety facility at 600 Grove Avenue and amending the zoning code. We will need a motion to amend Exhibit A, the change in fence height from eight foot to six foot. Do I hear a motion to amend Exhibit A of the ordinance?
I vote to amend Exhibit A of the ordinance.
Move?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? So having been moved and seconded to amend the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. So we will now need a motion to adopt the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
I move to adopt ordinance.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. Now, the next one, and I know there was a change made this morning, so let me just do the first sentence in new. This is the first reading of the ordinance adding Chapter 959, Vertical Geothermal Systems, and declaring an emergency. And do you want to just?
Sure, there, this was revised this morning. I just wanted to let council know what that change was. Another section was added to this chapter, which would provide an appeal process for anyone who got, you know, a decision from the city manager that they disagreed with. They would have the opportunity to appeal that to council, and that was the only change that was made.
Okay. So it's recommended that the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for adoption tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Having been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Robles?
Yes.
Your mark.
Yes, the motion carries. We will now need a motion to adopt the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any final discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll? And it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage.
Yes.
Ms. Waffington?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Your mark.
Yes, the motion carries. Okay, does anyone have any new business not otherwise on the agenda? Jody?
I just wanted to ask for maybe a quick update on Hillcrest. I kind of remembering there was a July or June 15 deadline that we were supposed to hear back something. So I just thought I'd check in on that, if this is the appropriate place to do so.
Yeah.
Okay. Get my notes out.
They have not followed back up with us to, the last word we had was that they were looking at the different entities that had been on the project and that we were supposed to hear more. We have not heard anything else.
Do we have a plan for follow up with them?
Rusty and I talked about that probably the best way versus doing more letters is for me just to give Liz Igo's office a call.
Great. I think that's.
The letters don't seem, seem to.
Active, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that we're at a point where elected officials really need to, you're going to have the most impact. So I believe that would be the next step.
I think it's great if you're going to call, if you need any help, let me know, I'm happy to help.
Right. And I also know that the county's still working budgets, too, so that it sounds like there's still a lot of moving parts. Anything else that was not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, then we're to the point of miscellaneous, and I think tonight we would start with April.
I do not have anything, thank you.
Okay. Jody?
Of course I have something. I wanted to thank the folks that came last month to give some community feedback on the new changes to the public safety and to give Chief Brady kudos for listening to that and the rest of the staff. So I think it's the exact appropriate civic duty that we did and follow through and listening to community feedback. And I think that's why it's important that folks come and express their points of view here. So I think it worked beautifully, and I appreciate everybody that was involved in that. I also wanted to say thank you to those that worked on the Fourth of July festivities in Wyoming. Those were fantastic. The weather was not our friend, and you still pulled it off. And the community spirit and the parade was pretty awesome to see. And I think it, I mean, it's one of those things, it's what makes us special. And lastly, please come to the Shakespeare in the Park tomorrow. So I've seen a number of these, I think it's a unique event for Wyoming, and hopefully we can do more, you know, different types of programming for the Village Greens. So I encourage everyone to come out, and I will see you there.
Thank you. Grant?
I just wanted to say thanks to everybody at the city that put on the Fourth of July weekend festivities. That was pretty awesome. Again, it's like, it's the reason we all moved here, small town USA. My kids got to ride in a fire truck. That was pretty awesome. They were over the moon about that, talked about it for like four days. So anyway, thanks, everybody, it was awesome.
I just wanted to thank, excuse me about my voice, but Jeremiah and Rusty. We just had a great Finance Committee meeting before this. And, you know, we talk about the revenues that are up through taxes, but also they're very mindful of our dollars and the tax, cash that we have on hand. And one example of that is the Star Ohio Fund. The rate on that is now 5.4%. The highest it's been in over a decade, maybe more. And Jeremiah knows that, he looks at that, and Rusty, too. And they moved more of our cash into that. It's a liquid investment, and you can take it out at any time. But while the rates are higher, we're riding that that rate. And when we need to adjust, we'll adjust. And those things don't always come up during council meetings, but they do come up in finance. And we appreciate the, how mindful they are with our tax dollars. So thank you.
Great. First, I just want to also say my thanks to the Water Works guys last night. That's, I mean, those are the kind of stories that when you tell people that live in other communities, they they don't believe. Is that, you know, the guys would respond to a phone call and be out all night so that, so that you wake up with your problem solved. You know, that's, that's the magic of Wyoming. And the other folks I wanted to recognize, I don't know how many of you were part of the community worship service that was on the Village Green on June 30th. But I wanted to thank Pastor Vicki Robinson from Friendship United Methodist, and then Pastor Gray Marshall and Pastor Ann Marshall from the Presbyterian Church of Wyoming. They put on a really great worship service where everyone could come. They had all the donations of either money or school supplies or food for Valley Interfaith. And it was just, it was a really special event, so I appreciate their leadership. So we need a motion, so thank you, to excuse Mr. Woodside and Ms. Peebles.
I move to excuse the absent members.
Second. Having been moved and seconded to excuse Mr. Woodside and Ms. Peebles, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Robles?
Yes.
Your mark.
Yes, the motion carries. And there will be no executive session tonight, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded to adjourn for the night, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.